Okay, Mayor, people are filing in, but I think you can get going. Thanks.
Okay, great. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's council work session on deer management. I just wanted to take a second before we get started to familiarize those of you who have not been involved in a council work session before to what it, how it runs and what it's really all about. So, a council work session is an opportunity for the council and I to get together to discuss a topic before it's ready to come to us at a council meeting for a vote. And that's what tonight is. It's an opportunity for us to discuss issues, hear from the research that's been done internally, hear from our residents, and then ask questions of each other or some of our guests this evening. And then we'll be ready to move forward in one way or another. So it's really an educational kind of thing, and it's not, it's not the type of thing where we would take a vote. So just, I just wanted to make that clear. It's informational only. Tonight, we will be discussing the deer management options that have been researched thus far. And I'm going to be asking our borough administrator to run us through most of that in a moment. We're also, you may see some faces there on the screen, and they are representatives of our boards and commissions that are, deal with environmental or health issues and may be impacted in one way or another by whatever decisions the council makes on this deer management situation. They, they are representatives from the Board of Health, the Environmental Commission, the Meadows Trail Volunteers, the Native Plant Sanctuary, and Sustainable Highland Park. Each of them will be asked to give us some comments. And I'm asking them each to stay within three to five minutes so that we can control the timing on the meeting and allow enough time for resident or council questions. After they speak, we'll be opening up the meeting to, for questions or comments from the mayor and council. I'm going to ask each council member to raise your hand so that I can call on you if you have a comment or a question. Then we will open up for public comment. And as per our usual, we will be holding, limiting each person to three minutes so that we can get as many people in to speak as possible. And the first people that will be called are people who have already registered to ask questions or comment. After we hear from the public, the council will again be able to discuss or ask questions of each other. And looking at a hot, a stop time of about 8:30 this evening. So at this point, I'm going to ask Terry Hovier, our Borough Administrator, to take us through some of the facts and research that she's done. Terry?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I'm going to, excuse me, share my screen. So that I have, I just have a few slides that kind of go along to kind of organize my thoughts a bit. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, sorry, Mayor, I realize I was supposed to have that slide up for you, but you did great without it. So recap of what the mayor just said. So, and we'll, we'll touch base when we get to the end, kind of, you know, the flow.
Your slide just disappeared.
What?
Your slide's no longer there.
Oh, I guess I have, I have two screens. It has to be over here. Yeah.
There you go.
Ah, food for future, oh, okay. So, so moving right along, I do want to touch base, for those of you who participated in our prior public forum, this is a familiar slide, but I figured for those who maybe knew, I wanted to make sure we recapped kind of how we got to this point and what steps we've taken kind of in a snapshot. This was initiated and has been kind of ongoing and kept going primarily through concerns, complaints brought to council and myself and the borough from residents themselves. This, this has been probably an issue percolating almost as long as I have been in this position, which is now over three years, but really in earnest in the last couple of years. Starting to drill into it. We had a meeting with the Division of Fish and Wildlife. Some of our members from our boards and commissions may have been at that meeting, maybe different people, but we, we brought them in to kind of help us scope the issue in January of 2019. In April of 2019, we had our quote unsuccessful drone survey done. Essentially, it was unsuccessful because we never got the final report, but we did not pay for that unsuccessful drone survey. And in December of 2019, we had our successful drone survey by the folks at Redden Valley Community College, which we discussed at our prior meeting, which essentially established that we do have a considerable amount of deer living both in and in the areas adjacent to Highland Park. That report is available on our website, hpborough, h p b o r o dot com, if anybody wants to take a look. February 2020, that's when we got the report, and then in April, we had another meeting, this time by Zoom, myself, members of Fish and Wildlife, as well as some of those regional partners that we've been talking about, Middlesex County, RU Ecological Reserve, and a representative from Piscataway Township Administration. Because based on some of the preliminary input from the Division of Fish and Wildlife, especially when you're looking at deer issues on the northern end of town, you know, a lot of the, you know, the issues cross borders and they recommended we reach out to some of those folks for kind of, to see how we might partner or at least be supportive of each other's efforts. June 2020, we had our public forum. And now, following that, we're here today on August 11th for this council session on deer management. So, what are the borough's options? The way I, I guess I feel like as an administrator, I was charged with looking into the issues that were raised by residents and by the council. And I essentially want to walk you through how I've distilled down to these two options at this point. The first is the most kind of obvious, which is the do nothing or status quo option. However, that clearly would address many of the concerns that were raised or out, that involve deer overpopulation, concerns such as for health, Lyme's disease transmission or, you know, incidents, aggressive deer, motor vehicle accidents, or year misses, ecological and landscaping damages caused by deer, things like that. Clearly, if we do nothing, we've seen, you know, kind of an increase in the negative side of that. And certainly anecdotally, beyond our deer drone survey, I know from residents, longtime residents, they all kind of can attest that, that the deer population is a lot more than it used to be. And then the second option, which looks kind of blunt when you look at it this way, but I'm really trying to help frame council's kind of choice, for lack of a better word, or at least kind of range of options, controlled bow hunting. And particularly, we would have to look at that for our 14 acre borough-owned Meadows property. And I'll get into a little bit more as to why of all these things, but I'm just trying to be as, as clear as I can. And, and/or, like I indicated earlier, encourage new or enhanced bow hunting programs in neighboring areas such as the Ecological Preserve over in Piscataway and Middlesex County Parks. Those, I, and then just from there, really quick, because this comes up in most of the meetings, where is the Meadows? I thought I'd just give you this quick snapshot, if you're familiar with Donaldson Park. I don't know if you can see my waving cursor, but the Meadows is this 14 acre. And this plateau up here is now where that solar field sits that was recently installed, so for, along Donaldson. So, this is roughly the area, and then the Public Works yard is right there at the bottom of Valentine Street. So for those of you not familiar with the Meadows, and in that Meadows area is a trail that residents enjoy, and we have a whole volunteer group, which you'll get to hear from, that, that does a lot of work in that area. So I just wanted to put it on the table. That's where the Meadows are. And then I just want to jump into, before I get into kind of some of the specifics about what bow hunting, Mayor, may not look like in Highland Park on the Meadows property. I wanted to just address kind of what I know are some, some options that have been tossed around, either members of the public, or there were, this was also covered in much more detail by the Division of Fish and Wildlife. But the reason I did not include those in an option for our purposes as a borough of Highland Park is, for example, infertility drugs and sterilization methods are very costly, extending various ranges. Depending on what you choose, you're looking at potentially up to $1,500 per treatment. And I'm not talking about sterilization as much as the drug infertility, chemical infertility. It has not been adequately proven effective, especially in a population like we have that roams and isn't kind of in an isolated situation. And it's frankly not likely to be approved by Fish and Wildlife without first trying traditional hunting approaches. And infertility drugs even require an additional permit. So it's, it's very energy, time, and financially draining to go that route. And based on the fact that I don't think there's clear science to support doing that in our situation, I just would take that off the table as an option at this point. Trap and transfer, very similar. That's where deer could be trapped and either transferred to another location or in some cases euthanized in place. However, those programs are also costly. Transferring them to other locations, there really aren't viable locations that I'm aware of where you can take them. There are a lot of concerns about spreading diseases between different deer populations, either in this state or in other states. So, I, and again, Fish and Wildlife requires an additional level of permitting and proof that other methods such as traditional hunting approaches have not been successful or cannot be successful. And given the small scale of our, our approach, I just don't think that's a viable option for Highland Park. And lastly, I don't want to dismiss some of the other options that have come up, but I don't think they necessarily address concerns around overpopulation. Things like repellent sprays, fencing, noise makers, reflectors. Some of those may have some effectiveness in certain situations, certainly on people's own private property. If you're really diligent about applying chemical sprays to deter foliage, eating of foliage, it can work, but it takes a lot of resource and energy to keep that going. And for borough properties, I just don't feel would be very viable. But, you know, I'm not to say that these things can't work, but they certainly don't really directly address an overpopulation issue. There are ways of maybe mitigating some of the damage caused by the deer. So, for the, I just wanted to kind of put this out there that I'm, I'm aware of these different approaches, but that's why I'm not focusing on them at this time. So if option number two, which option number two being controlled bow hunting on the Meadows property in Highland Park, what would be the next steps? Because I understand that's naturally where people's minds and council, I know, have already asked me that question as well. What would be the next steps? And I've checked with the borough attorney, and apparently it's fairly simple. We would have to establish a resolution authorizing bow hunting on the Meadows property. In fact, I've learned a lot about this area in a short period of time. But essentially, a large property owner would essentially have the same kind of controls over their own property. So, we would, we would also have to develop a deer management plan. And I would argue you might want to have the plan before the resolution because there's going to be things you want to put in the resolution that would be informed by the plan that would establish deer management and deer population reduction goals. Who is authorized to bow hunt on the property? I know that's a concern, a safety concern and a security concern. We have the ability to control who is allowed to hunt on the property. And there's a wide range of options. There's, we would have a screening process that would, people would have to qualify. They would obviously have to be registered to hunt in the state of New Jersey and in good standing. But we could set the, the criteria and the qualifications. I will say, I've been, been doing a lot of homework, and I've called an organization called White Buffalo. They're a nonprofit organization focused on ecological preservation of lands and deer management as a, as a tool to preserve and enhance natural areas. And there may be an opportunity to partner in a way that maybe brings some of their, they, they have people who do hunting on, on properties throughout the state, in the tri-state area, quite established organization. And they may be willing to partner with us to help us connect with very skilled and experienced bow hunters that may be able to take on a bit of this on behalf of the borough with our goals in mind. And then the other end of the spectrum could be, you know, recreational bow hunting as, as just creating opportunities for members of the public. I haven't gotten a strong indication from council that that's the priority. It's been more of a sense of how to, what's the best way to control, to do deer management? And I, I would think a partnership with, organization with qualified hunters may be a, a good way to go if, if we can pull out all the details. And my initial conversations with them were very positive. So, let me go back to the bullet. The borough decides who has the authority and to hunt on this property if we decide to move forward. We would also establish when bow hunting would be allowed. Like, there's a, the, the state establishes the overall season, which is September 12th this year through, I believe, the third week in February. But we could limit that. We don't have to necessarily hunt that whole time, and we don't have to hunt six days a week. You know, we can kind of control that to a degree, but we have to, to be effective, we have to allow enough opportunity if, to harvest deer in the, in the Meadows for this to work. And whether or not the property would be open to the public during the times when hunting is permitted would also be something we control. I think I've heard loud and clear from council, we would have signage, we would promote, the, the area would be closed during those times. There are places in the state that have the trails in use while hunting's going on. The hours tend to be fairly different, but I think initially, we were, we would look at probably limiting that, but that would be something we would be able to decide. No matter what, we have to fall and adhere to the Division of Fish and Wildlife's regulations for in-season bow hunting, which, one example that just comes to mind would be, we, we wouldn't be able to allow hunting on a Sunday that is not allowed in New Jersey. So there are other sorts of regulations, but we can kind of set the terms on our own property. So, that's kind of, you know, how I would end here in terms of how I would frame the issue. I'm, I'm, I'll be open to taking questions from, from council to get into the weeds because I've looked into this as a very top line. But I think before we can go too far down into the weeds on some of the specifics, the idea is to gauge how comfortable we are and hearing from others about how comfortable we are with this controlled bow hunting. I think that's my last slide, Mayor. So with that, I think we can, I don't have anything left, Mayor, unless you need me to cover anything else at this point.
You know, I, you know, I know I have some questions for you, and there may be some others, but let's wait until the council and mayor get to ask questions.
Okay.
At this point, I think it probably makes sense for us to turn to our chairs and commission representatives. Could you take the?
Yes, sorry. Let me, easier said than done, stop share. There we go.
There we are. Thank you. All right. So what I'd like to do is call on each of our board representatives for their thoughts on a deer management plan. And I'm going to start with the Board of Health, Jay Crossen. Do you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, and thanks, Terry, for giving that introduction. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Great. So I, as the mayor mentioned, my name is Jay Crossen. I'm a representative of the Highland Park Board of Health. I've been a member of the Board of Health since 2008, and I've been a resident in the borough since 1989. The, the Board of Health has had some discussions relating to deer population in preparation for my presentation today. And following those discussions and my review of the public health literature, we are advising against a deer hunt within the borough or in adjacent areas. And I'll go over some of the public health reasons for that briefly. So the first is around Lyme disease. So, hunting for deer population control will not help to control Lyme disease infection in the borough. The reason for this is that deer are actually not a vector for Lyme disease infection in humans. Research conducted at the Harvard School of Public Health shows that hunting deer won't effectively combat Lyme disease because ticks also depend on another key host animal, white-footed mice. Ticks do not actually get Lyme disease from deer, as is commonly believed. Rather, ticks contracted as larvae when they feed on infected mice. Adult female ticks need the deer to lay their eggs and for food, but the deer do not become infected. That was a quote from Harvard. Deer are a key part of the tick life cycle, of course, but reducing the number of deer will not break the life cycle, like the life cycle, but will instead lead to a greater number of ticks per deer that remain. Mathematical modeling of the effects of deer population control on ticks has demonstrated that even a drastic reduction in the density of the deer population, such as, you know, would be, would be very drastic reduction, would take many, many years to have an effect on a tick population in a, in a small area. Effective public health interventions for reducing Lyme disease are of course very important, and we at the board have been talking about that for some time. But these, those efforts should focus on proven methods for reducing the infected tick population and the use of insect repellents to protect people from exposure. Research conducted here in New Jersey in 2004 and 2005 has demonstrated the effectiveness of what are called bait boxes or tick tubes, which effectively reduce infected tick populations by over 90%. The tick tubes are commercially available, relatively low cost. They cost about $4 each or about $40 for a typical lawn in Highland Park. The CDC, and you can get them on Amazon. The CDC recommends the use of EPA-registered insect repellents to reduce exposure to ticks to humans, wearing protective clothing, and checking for ticks after being outside. That's the way they recommend reducing exposure to Lyme disease. So those, these are all fairly low-cost interventions and are really the most effective methods for reducing exposure to Lyme disease. The second public health issue associated with, with deer hunts is what happens to the carcasses and the meat. The consumption of deer meat entails a modest potential public health risk due to the widespread presence of chronic wasting disease and other prion diseases in the wild deer population. The CDC has-
You're at the four-minute mark.
Sorry, okay, I'm, I'm wrapping up. Sorry, the CDC has identified whitetail deer as a known carrier of chronic wasting disease. And although there are no confirmed cases of chronic wasting disease in humans, consumption of meat from infected animals is thought to put humans at risk of contracting prion diseases themselves. And there are no effective treatments or cures for those diseases, and the diseases are fatal. So there are no public health benefits to hunting deer, either in terms of reducing exposure to Lyme disease or in safely addressing human hunger. And so that's why we're gonna, we're recommending against a controlled hunt. So thanks for the opportunity to present some, some information on public health issues.
Thank you, Jay, and thank the Board of Health for us for taking this subject on and reporting. All right, next, I have Alan Williams from the Environmental Commission.
Okay. For those who don't know me, I'm Alan Williams. I've been on the commission, oh, 13 years now. Been a resident of Highland Park since 1978. We took a poll of the Environmental Commission, and somewhat surprisingly, half thought there's no significant problem. The other half thinks there is a problem that we expect will just get worse. The numbers from the Redden Valley College study, if I remember right, for, on average, was 74 per deer per square mile. Observation around the, the community, we've seen over 20 fawns. So it's just getting larger. We feel that a, a hunt is appropriate to, it will help the ecology of the Meadows. It'll certainly help on the south side of Highland Park to reduce the intrusion of the, of the deer into the, into yards, reduce the risk of automobile accidents. Essentially, we agree with what Terry had to say, that hunting is really the, the only appropriate method. The, the contraception, the tying of tubes is just too expensive, I would think. If we, if we have more than a very modest goal, and it hasn't been found to be effective. So basically, half the Environmental Commission supports it, half does not. Concerning the Meadows, the Environmental Commission as, as a whole would hate to see the, the the Meadows closed from September through February. An awful, an awful lot of residents use it on a regular basis. We had, we also had the concern about the, who is hunting? I don't think you want amateurs in there, and security around the perimeter is, is a major issue, I think. And what is the overall liability that the borough may have if there's an accident or, or something? I guess one of the things we'd like to do is see a detailed plan of what evolves from this meeting. And I think the rest of the public would also be interested in a, in a, what the detailed plan is as put together. One other, other comments. The, on Monday, I got a postcard in the, my door, front door, from Deer HP. And, which has a link to their website. Proof of that demonstrated to me, at least, there was a lot of misinformation, non-information that was not science, consensus by scientists. And I think that from that organization, you're going to get a further pushback than you already have. Those are my comments for today.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alan, and please thank the Environmental Commission for us.
Certainly.
Okay, then I have our Meadows volunteers, Craig Ambrose.
Have you muted?
There we go. I unmuted myself, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Terry and the council for inviting me to speak. So I've been with a Meadows volunteer for about 10 years. I was lucky enough to stumble upon the Meadows 10 years ago. Even though I've been a resident for 80, since 1986, I really wasn't aware of it. And a lot of people still aren't, surprisingly. But this is an amazing urban forest, and it's a very special place that we really need to consider preserving for our children and our grandchildren and for ourselves. So when I got involved, I was so curious about it because I'm a tree guy. And in college, I took this course about study of trees. And I wandered the Meadows, and I found 38 species of trees in the Meadows, which is an amazing number, given how small that is and that the way that a forest develops over time. And it's on top of an old construction debris landfill, very small soil levels involved. So the trail crew involved, were involved in developing and now maintaining this trail. And we are also managing the forest, right? We're controlling these invasive species. Deer is an alpha species, alpha predator. There's alpha predators in the floral species, too. Mysteria, that'll cover everything and destroy everything in a forest. Garlic mustard, that'll cover the bottom of a forest and wipe out all native species. So we use our grants to improve access, and we build decks, and we plant native species. And we're trying to maintain this environment and this ecosystem. We currently have a grant we're working with from the National Nature's Conservancy in Sustainable Jersey. We're planting 200 native trees in the, in the floodplain of the meadows. If you go there, you'll see that being done. This grant required specific deer protection on each plant. But I want to discuss also this forest as thinking of it in three layers. There's a, there's a ground layer. There's this understory, middle layer, and then there's the tall trees that are canopies. The tall trees developed years ago when the meadows was first closed. And then that canopy, the middle layer and the canopy, or the lower layer, I'm sorry. The, you know, this understory developed at that time, and the ground cover layer. The deer came in and destroyed the native species in the ground cover layer and in the understory layer. Now there's basically one dominant woody understory tree, small tree, and that is bush honeysuckle. That's the dominant, everything else is getting eaten by the deer. A new sapling comes up from the ground, they eat it. They eat everything, except for certain non-native species. And since trees are not immortal, these trees fall. They develop about two or three saplings per tree. They're, they're eaten right away. So the forest is not going to regenerate itself with a, with a very high, with a predator like a deer population. So what's that problem? The problem is it diminishes the diversity of this ecosystem. So these non-native plants that are now being taken over because the deer aren't eating them, they don't fully support this native insect, bird, animal populations that all developed together, including the deer. This, this ecosystem all developed together, you know, years ago. We came in as humans and brought in all these invasive species, and now have let the deer become the top predator. So this, this ecosystem suffers tremendously. And why is that important if it suffers? Because the forest is very important to our lives. Know, you know, that there are direct and indirect benefits for a forest. Number one, it's air quality. A forest, basically, the research now from, from federal services are that a forest consumes about 10% of carbon dioxide that we emit. Urban trees, about 1% of carbon dioxide that we emit. So trees are very valuable to us in terms of absorbing that carbon dioxide we emit. And they store it in their wood, in their leaves, and they, they keep it there until we just, until they die, or we do nothing about them. Forest cools us-
Excuse me, Craig, you got one minute, sorry.
And there's also that financial benefit. It's also been shown that having parks and forest in communities raises values. So that's very important. So we regularly see these deer all around the forest. They're, they're the alpha predator. We do our best, we plant, try to plant species that don't eat, they basically eat everything. We use fencing, limited success, and we keep working at it. And I want to point out that when we decide if bow hunting is decided upon, there is a loop trail system in the meadows that we have developed. And that if you put a tree blind in a tree, anywhere in the meadows, I believe you would be able to see the trail from that tree blind. So even though this, you know, the theory or the recommendation is these bow hunters are up in trees, and they're shooting down to the ground, and that that'll make it safe. I say that that safety, this has to be looked at very carefully because they're not going to be aware where this trail system is around them. And they're not going to know where to put these tree blinds. So you have to have meadows people involved if you're going to go that route.
All right, you're, you're at your, your time there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Craig, and that's, I, if the council decides to move forward with this, I hear you recommending that your Meadows volunteers will, will work with whoever gets hired to do the hunt, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to Mary Denver and the Native Plant Sanctuary. Mary, we can't see you, but can you say hello?
Hello, everyone, and thank you for inviting me to this session. So much that Craig has said we experience at the Native Plant Sanctuary. My daughter Belinda and I took responsibility for the Native Plant Sanctuary in 2009, spring of 2009, as part of our work for the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Most of the time during the first years that we worked there was spent in invasive species removal. And we did our best to replace them with plants that were historically present here in New Jersey, even to Middlesex County. Now, why do we do this? Craig has touched upon some of these points. Over millennia, plants, mammals, birds, insects, reptiles, amphibians, fish, and any given ecosystem evolves together, and a life support system developed. When one or more of these life forms declines or is destroyed, the remaining creatures suffer. Let's look at birds, butterflies, and deer. A Highland Park resident recently commented on Facebook that he hasn't seen as many chickadees as he used to. Chickadee parents need between 6,000 and 9,000 caterpillars to raise one brood of chicks. In fact, over 90% of songbirds feed their chicks on caterpillars and other soft-bodied insects or their, for their larvae, or their larva. We, where do they find these softies? They find them on native trees and shrubs that host the larvae of butterflies, moths, and other insects. Where do the deer come into play? In given areas, they have browsed some native plants almost out of existence. The remaining plants are choked and smothered by the invasive plants that can then move in. The remaining plants, oh, excuse me, deer browse and invasive species are major threats to our forests and woodlands and to all the creatures that depend on them. The deer don't stop with browsing. Two Highland Park residents very recently posted also on Facebook photos of a majestic buck that was seen at the meadows. Viewers oohed and nod over his fine set of antlers. Only a few knew that the velvet on the antlers must come off in the fall to ready the males for the rutting season. How do the bucks do this? They select a tree or trees to rub and rub their antlers against until the velvet is removed. In so doing, they girdle the tree. In other words, they completely remove the bark from the circumference of the tree. The tree dies because nutrients can no longer travel up the tree trunk. This antler rubbing will be repeated in the early spring to help loosen the antlers, which must be shed for new growth. Now, like at the meadows over at the Native Plant Sanctuary, we have tried deer spray, which is somewhat effective, and it's a non-toxic. It's made up of, the base is rotten eggs, and then mint, rosemary, and lime, and lavender. So it's, it's not affecting the environment, it doesn't pose a threat to it.
Excuse me, Mary, I just want to warn you, you're at the one-minute mark.
At the one-minute mark, okay. Let's see. Now, I don't know if you're aware that a virus has, is spreading out in California among the deer, and it's an adenovirus, hemorrhagic disease. In California, it is illegal to feed deer. And the public are being, this is in the Bay Area now. The public are being warned, please do not feed the deer because when they congregate, it's when the virus spreads. And the deer are supposed to be practicing social distancing. But if the, if they're fed or given water, they collect in one area, and the disease spreads. It's this disease spreads in, in New Jersey, which had seven outbreaks since 1955. And the last one was in 2012. New Jersey's on the Atlantic Flyway, which is a route used by migrating birds twice a year and encompasses some of the hemisphere's most productive ecosystems, including forest beaches and coastal wetlands. Now, New Jersey's an important component, component here. And we need the native plants for the birds who fly you all night, come down in the morning, and forage for most of the day.
All right, Mary, I'm sorry, you're at your time there.
All right. Well, we do support, there's four of us who work at the Native Plant Sanctuary, and we do support a deer management program.
Okay, thank you, Mary, and thanks for all the wonderful things you do at the Native Plant Reserve. It's a wonderful place to escape the chaos of the world.
Yes, it is.
And now we'll go with Hakeet Mano for Sustainable Highland Park. Hi, Hakeet.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hakeet, speak up a little bit, please.
Oh, okay. You hear me now?
It's better when you're forward, yeah.
Okay. We also discussed the deer management problem in our Sustainable Highland Park meetings. And we acknowledge that the different options of dealing with the growing deer population are not ideal. None of them are, and doing, but doing nothing is not a solution either. In the absence of its natural predators, the deer population is only going to increase to such an extent where they might become dangerous, especially the bucks in mating season. What comes to mind is like what happens, for instance, with monkeys invading urban cities in India. So doing nothing will only, you know, make the situation worse. And not just the, it's not just going to be a nuisance to gardeners anymore. Although we can adapt, gardeners can adapt the forest and plant accordingly. But what we do stress is that there needs to be a county and statewide solution. And it has to be worked out in order to formulate a viable short-term solution and more strategic long-term solutions that preserves wildlife habitats in New Jersey. For instance, converting, you know, from animal-based agriculture to plant-based agriculture can save 100 million acres. And that these acres can be planted into forests and increasing, you know, wildlife habitats in New Jersey. So Highland Park has to work with its adjacent municipalities to coordinate efforts and share costs, perhaps. But also, if we don't coordinate with Edison and Biscataware and whoever is adjacent, our, we won't see, with a little hunting that will, will, might do, they will just migrate back into our midst. So there has to be a comprehensive plan, and preferably with Middlesex County and/or the state. So given the unsustainability and high costs of neutering, or, you know, the other part, perceptives that Terry talked about, Sustainable Highland Park has no objection to using monitored and patrolled bow and arrow hunting in the meadows. And it, in that way, it actually will, it kind of mimics the reintroduction of a predator as a short-term solution. So we cannot introduce, you know, wolves or coyotes into our midst. So this could potentially replace a predator. That, that's about it from us. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Hakeet. So at this point, I'd like to open up discussion amongst the council members. If you have a question for anyone on the panel here or for Terry, could you please raise your hand so I can call on you to speak? Okay, Matt and Phil.
I have a question for, for Craig at the Meadows Trail. And so I, thank you very much for that, for explanation of all of the forestry in there. That was very helpful. My question is, is that, is there, with your help, the ability to set up a, a, a place for the hunters to go? And then I guess a follow-up that is, one of the things that Terry mentioned is that there is a, sort of, we have the ability to, to direct and limit of when the hunt would take place, time and, and days and things like that. And I'm, I'm wondering if you have thought about ways that that might be, we might be able to best accommodate a hunt and the continued usage of, of the meadows simultaneously or in, in shifts or something like that? Is that something that you have talked about?
Thanks, Matt, yes, actually, it has. When I arrived in the meadows 10 years ago, there actually was a deer stand in the middle of this circular trail system in the central part, kind of the largest part of the meadows. That was a flatty area. There was a stand up in a cottonwood, and it was apparently used for that purpose. I'm not, I probably the borough wasn't aware of it. But anyway, I took that down. So that seems to be this, the, the area of the meadows where it would be most feasible, put it that way. The other areas that are meadows, those deer stands will be at the perimeter of the meadows. And then you're dealing with people and access outside of the meadows that would be, you know, within range, let's say, or within sight, anyway. So is there a place? Yes. Is there a, is there a way to make that safe? We didn't think so because there's an issue with really shutting down the meadows. If you could shut down the meadows, sure, you could make it safe. But the meadows does not have a fence around it. There is one formal entrance, access to the meadows, and there must be 10 informal entrances. There's an informal entrance from the Edison side that apartments along the river. They come in that way. There's, you can get in at Kraut's Brook, you can get in around the solar field, you can get in off the bike path. So there are ways to walk in. There's deer paths there that have already developed that trail, so it's easy to walk in. So sure, you can close off the main entrance, and they did that when the virus hit. And they put up stuff very hard. I'm not sure how you can do it, you know, quite frankly, to shut it down. I don't see it, the alternative of, of having the meadows open while there is hunting. I don't see that as workable.
I just want to pick up on something that you mentioned, Terry, and that you made me think about, Craig. Terry, you said that we can authorize who would be hunting. Can we prevent recreational hunters?
I didn't hear any of that question, I'm sorry.
The question was for me, it was, was essentially saying, can we prevent recreational hunters? Yes, I mean, we, we can stipulate, you know, we could say we're just bringing in white buffalo, and only that organization's allowed, or the bow hunters of New Jersey are allowed. These are ways other towns have gone. I, I think I catch where you may be headed in your mind, because we've had numerous conversations. The issue of safety is a big one. And we want to make sure whatever was proposed, we felt very-
And we want to make sure whatever was proposed, we felt very comfortable. We would communicate what's going on. There would have to be signage. But you're right, it's not going to be a walled area. But my understanding, and this was something we would have to look into very carefully as part of our plan, to make sure everybody's comfortable, but that there are ways to do this, because there are other places with similar trail systems, et cetera. Ours is nestled into a community, so that may be a little different than, for example, the Ecological Preserve. But there are, you know, apartment buildings adjacent to where they hunt over there. There are access points, and they manage it. They have a very limited window when they do it. So I guess this is my way of saying, I think we have a number of ways we can explore safety, be it who's allowed in to hunt and how we post and plan how this would work. I don't have it all figured out, but I do think we could, and I certainly welcome, you know, the people who know the place the best for advice. But also, we could tap into other folks, if council is leaning in this direction.
Okay. I'm going to call on Phil George now, and then if any of the panelists also have a question, please raise your hand after the council members. Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. First, Craig, I want to thank you for stepping up to replace Steve Barnes, our Meadows Trail emeritus. I see you working every Sunday with Paul and the other volunteers, and I thank you for that. I have a few very brief questions regarding the meadows and the larger area in general. I know that there were a lot of talk, and I hate to say the word buckwoods, but back in the days before it began to clear, there were deer in that area. Have they migrated to the meadows? And from your observation, is the population increasing in the meadows over the last two or three years?
Well, the last two or three years, I asked our volunteers that same question, because I wasn't sure of the answer. And they were mixed in that response. But basically, it felt like the population is increasing, but it didn't feel exponential. I think when we looked at that June meeting video, the Fish and Wildlife person talked about this, it being exponential explosion of deer population. Doesn't feel that way in the meadows yet. But they're elusive. They hear us, and they have better hearing than we have. They don't have good eyesight, but they have better hearing. So we only catch their tails as they run away from us, except in the rutting season. Then they show up on the trail. The males will actually show up on the trails and stare you down. So I would say that I was not familiar with how many deer were in buckwoods. But given the way the population just moves around, of course, you know, they're going to move into the meadows, they're going to move into the neighborhoods. They're looking for food. That's what they're looking for. So they're in buckwoods food.
That was my, I'm sorry, Terry.
No, I just wanted to, one thing, I did explore that question a little bit with the gentleman I spoke to at White Buffalo, who I had mentioned earlier. And he took a quick look, but he's done this in a lot of places, that are drone survey. And what he said is, you're at the point where majority of these deers are just living in neighborhoods, in the lawns, and so it may be that, and I'm guessing, I'm not saying this is definitive, but the reason you're not just saying, oh, they're moving from here to there, it's because, I mean, they use these areas as grazing, and they come and clear out your plants as you try to save them, but they are living in the neighborhoods as well, very comfortably, probably. And so that may be why, I don't know that it's exponential, I can't say that, but maybe it wouldn't be as obvious for the trail area, because it may be they've expanded some of their living space to just the regular old neighborhoods.
Thank you.
That does make sense.
Next question, you've talked about how the meadows has grown up from the landfill that we knew that it was back in the 60s and 70s and reforested itself. But you spoke about the destruction that the deer are causing to the understory. The volunteers have been trying to replant that area consistent with federal and state guidelines, especially for riverine areas. Are you running into challenges from the deer feeding in those areas?
Well, they took control of the entire meadows. So are they, do we run into challenges with that? Yes, everywhere. They are in the flood plain and every section of the meadows. They bed down there. They put their fawns in the meadows during the day while the adults go out. So, you know, we'll come across fawns. But they have and will continue to eat almost anything, quite frankly. And as we plant, and we're planting native species, we're just trying to protect them. So are they continuing to eat? Absolutely. They tend not to eat the non-natives. They don't like to eat mugwort. They don't like to eat Japanese knotweed. They don't like the garlic mustard. So that's why they get a foothold in the environment and ecosystem. But all the native stuff, they're eating away. That's eaten away.
Thanks. Craig, last question real quick. You talked about your perception that the area is very difficult to secure. And I know when I walked the trail through the whole area, on the Edison side by the river apartments, there's a fence, but there's also a pass-through where we know that people from the Edison side come in. But if the hunt was limited, you know, we've heard people say, is it going to be from September till February? If it was a one-day or two-day event, could the security in that method, if it was one day or two days over the course of, say, two months on different occasions, could security be arranged using the knowledge that you of the trail crews? Because I only know three entrances, and you've mentioned 10. Could you share that information so that a security plan could be realistically developed?
Well, I don't know if it could be realistically developed. I would leave that up to your security experts to develop that. I can tell you how people get in. That's easy, you know. I could show you entrances and show those people and say, all right, then, come up with a plan for securing it. Putting a yellow tape across between two trees, in my mind, is not securing it. I mean, you could literally surround the entire meadows with yellow tape. And, you know, that would be the fence. So you have to come up with a better plan for securing it than putting tape up. Whatever that is, you got to figure that out. Okay.
Are there any other council members that have questions they'd like to ask? Are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, Phil.
If no one else has a question, I was trying to share and go around. I have a brief question from Mary about the Native Plant Sanctuary.
Yes. Yes, Phil.
Hi, Mary. I know I see you there probably every other day when I stop by. Can you briefly tell me what's happened to the understory? You talked about the, excuse me, you started to talk about the wildlife, especially the migrations and also the birds that feed there. What has happened to the understory in the Native Plant Sanctuary, which is kind of a different situation than the meadows?
We have the same situation that Craig faces in the meadows. And it's the bush honeysuckle, amber honeysuckle, which has taken over the understory. The deer do not like it. And we have cleared, we've spent hours with students from Rutgers, students from the College of New Jersey. We have a new volunteer who is helping us to remove the bush honeysuckle. We are replacing the honeysuckle with native plants. This is a repairing and buffer zone, and we need, anything we take out, we have to replace with native plants. And that's what we're trying to do. Now, the deer are eating, they're browsing the plants. I tried to cage them. It takes about an hour for me to get the fencing laid out, to cut it, you know, and measure it to the size I need, and then to get it secured around the plant. This can take me an hour to do. We also use the deer spray, and it's successful some of the times. But then it rains. If we have a heavy rain, we have to go out and spray again. So, but we're, the chokeberries, winterberry, klettra, we're planting wonderful native plants there, but they are suffering from deer grass. In 24 hours, they can do the planting. And then the antler rub is something else. It's fatal for the tree.
Thank you, Mary. I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Any other council people have a question?
I do, Gal. I don't think you can see my hand up, though.
Go ahead, Tara.
My question is for Terry. Could we theoretically have, if we do do a hunt, have it open only to Highland Park residents or borough employees who have more of a stake in the safety of our town?
The answer is yes, because we can decide who has priority. The challenge is juggling our concerns around safety and effectiveness, and also the skill of, bow hunting is a skill. And, you know, we have to think through the pros and cons. For all I know, we have, you know, a world-class resident in this area. I don't know. But I think it goes down to, I'm just giving you my two cents. I guess I would trade skill and expertise, because that brings us to safety. It's a little, I think, more guaranteed to be humane over local rights. But certainly, I think if there was a way to do both, that would be something we could look at. But in other communities, that's, you know, they set the standards, and then they can say, we give priority to residents and county residents, you know, there are ways to do that. Our area is so small, though, so I don't know, you know, how many overall hunters we would accommodate. So I guess the bottom-line answer is, we can set the terms to what we think works for us.
Yeah, of course, safety is the most important. I just wondered if they meant the safety standards, if it could be that way.
Yeah, nothing I've learned tells me otherwise. Although I think one of the things we have to look at is this idea between kind of a conservation-minded, management-minded approach versus recreational hunting. And, you know, for such a small area with kind of a fairly targeted goal of kind of controlling the population, if I'm understanding what the council's interest is, you know, we have to see which gets us to our, you know, in part of this plan, gets us better effectiveness of our plan. Because, you know, recreational hunters may only want a couple of deer versus if somebody's coming in with a management approach, they may be willing to do more based on our goals. So that's, but these are all things that kind of are in the, they delve deep into those bullets I had up there, where those will be options that council can certainly consider.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things, Tara, in my speaking with some of the mayors who have undergone some of these programs, in particular Princeton has been doing a deer hunt now for, I think, 10 years. They caution me, from a humane perspective, to try to get the most qualified hunters so that, you know, people aren't just shooting arrows and not knowing how to, I hate to say this, but effectively kill a deer as opposed to wounding the poor creatures and having them running around with bows hanging out of their bodies, you know?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. So any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Hagit from Sustainable Highland Park. I don't know if she's still there.
Still here?
Yes, hi.
Hi. You had mentioned about working with surrounding municipalities and, you know, the county, state, and so forth. So I guess this is kind of for Terry as well. And you were saying it would take, I think, I don't know if it was yourself or Jay, that it would take years for us to actually see results. Because we're saying one or two days, and let's say we kill 100 deer, 300 deer during that time. What's the end result? Because if we're back at square one, and we're surrounded by Biscatawa, and we're surrounded by Edison, who's doing a huge massive project, and we're back to square one with the deers rubbing their antlers on the trees, and we're back to square one, like, what's the end all? If we're small Highland Park, we're doing this, we're running up against a wall, essentially. Because then all the deer, I mean, I don't, what's the long-term goal? Are we going to do this for 10 years, then we'll finally see a result, or I don't?
Hagit, do you mind if I jump? Because I don't, I've been, I've been working this a bit. I guess, to be, to just be clear, to be effective in the long run, this is an annual thing. The population grows, and so this is a maintenance approach. You might adjust your goals as time goes by. You evaluate, you know, the plan. But to be long-term effective, you know, doing a deer hunt one year, I'm not sure that, I mean, it might help a little bit. I will say, I did ask questions of the White Buffalo folks, the Division of Fish and Wildlife Biologists. What would the results be? You know, would you see results in a year? You would see some of the plants resume. I know that that's what I heard in Princeton. It was fairly quick. Those plants do take on, and birds do come back. But you need to keep the maintenance going. And I think where you're going, I heard, kind of, I know, because where you live, you're thinking about kind of the northern end of town in particular. I see the meadows as potentially a controlled bow hunt program there would help the meadows' property and the adjacent neighborhoods potentially with some relief from the deer. I don't think, and based on my knowledge of talking to these other folks, that it would necessarily have as much impact on the other side of town, which is where these discussions with Rutgers and the county properties in those neighboring communities, where they have larger swaths in our, kind of, our neighbors, would come into play, and those are the conversations we've already started. But I think you could do them together or independent of one another.
And what's the cost to the borough? Let's say we do it.
It really depends, but I've been really focused on, it depends on, in part, if we want to partner with one of these organizations that they may have programs where we pay for costs, like arrows and things, for the members that would come in. If it's recreational, basically, there is no cost other than our administration of the program, signage we put up, additional, whatever kind of plan, security we would want to put into place. But it's a low cost, especially compared to other alternatives. If we want to partner with an organization where we'd have specific trained people, there may be some, and that's what I would have to explore in a little more detail. But my sense was it would be covering costs, not paying people, so manageable. And if we wanted, depending on, I heard what Jay talked about from the Board of Health with regard to the deer, we have talked about potentially donating deer meat to homeless food groups. We have to explore some of Jay's points a little further before we did that. But there would be a cost associated with doing so. I believe it's about $80 per deer to dress and butcher. So those would be decisions council would have to make. But I think they're all things that we could afford at this point.
Josh, did I see your hand up?
Yes. A quick question for Terry, but also, I guess it goes along with what you said regarding more regional. regarding a more regional approach. If we were to decide as council to, to go with option number two, to a regulated hunt, you mentioned you had conversations, right? Started to have conversations with the Rutgers Eco Preserve County. Have, you could share with us what their reactions have been? Do you think that it's something that they will be willing to work with us on?
There was a general openness, this was, the meeting was facilitated by Fish and Wildlife in the sense that they were the ones who kind of pulled us all together, because it was their recommendation. My understanding, so the Rutgers Ecological Preserve, which I think would probably be the more significant in some ways, based on some of my conversations, already has a program in place. It's currently limited to one month during basically what looks to be their school winter break. And that's what, my understanding, though, from the folks that run that, that there were already discussions about modifications to their plan. I don't know, I haven't had a chance, frankly, to loop back with them to see what happened. But I will say, all the, the folks there, they had their own processes they would have to go through. They are not just, they don't have, they have their own governing bodies that have to make the final decision. However, they were very supportive, to the extent that Highland Park was reaching out and, and trying to help. The county does do deer management hunting on properties not in our area, but elsewhere in the county. So they have some familiarity. And the folks there were willing to talk more, but they, they, they haven't done those programs. And they were looking more kind of at the upper northern edge of Johnson Park, not so much where the, you know, active recreation parts are, but the wooded areas up, they own a lot of property up the river, that might also be conducive, depending on, on size. So, they, that was very preliminary, though. So, I would just say, leave it at, I think there was reception to the conversation. And if there was a sense from the governing body of Highland Park that this was a priority and wanted their help, they would be willing to come to the table and explore. Whether or not it would work, I don't know. But, but that's, I guess I'm babbling at this point. That's the answer.
Terri, I just got a text from Elsie. She's trying to log in, but can you send her the link?
Yes, but what I wanted to tell you is we're at eight seventeen, Mayor, and we had hoped to close, and we haven't even gotten to our, our public. We have sixty-four attendees, eighteen of which, if they're all there, have signed up in advance. So I wanted you to have that in your mind. I'm, I'm running short an assistant today, so that's why I'm, I'm struggling to send her the link. I am looking for, can you, can I, can I distract myself from figuring that out for the moment?
Terri, I can under, I can send it to her if you want to.
The problem is, it's her link.
I think she's in the attendees.
Oh, is she? Oh. Does she found the general link? Let me see, then I can promote her.
I thought I just saw her name.
Yeah, she is.
Oh, is she? All right, let me just find her then. That's easier. I can promote. Where are you, Elsie?
Very well, you're doing that. If you can mute yourself a second. Do any of our panelists have a question before we turn it over to the public?
I, I did have one question about deer-proof fencing. I don't know if that's been explored as an option around the meadows, you know, to protect the, the native species there. If that's the real concern, it seems like fencing off these areas where the, the at-risk plants are would be useful.
Do you want me to address it now or later?
Yeah, if you could answer him, Craig.
Yeah, we've explored that. There's, there's currently thinking that there's two ways of doing that. One is an eight-foot fence. The deer can't jump over. The other option they talk about, then you also have to make sure that fence is not, not an invisible fence. Deer have poor eyesight, so you want them to recognize that as a fence, an eight-foot fence. The other option is putting in two six-foot fence, about six feet apart. So the deer get distracted, and they don't find that easy to do. So you can put up fencing, but they will knock it down. So it has to be very robust, if you really want to protect stuff. We've had that experience. We put up eight-foot fencing, and they knocked it down. So with, you know, displays on it and all kinds of stuff. We find the most effective way is almost to do each plan individually. We tried areas of fencing, and that didn't work very well.
Excuse me, Mayor, I can't find, I can't find Elsie in the, in the thing. Am I missing it?
Matt, do you want to take over and see if you can, can Matt help you?
No, he's not a host. I honestly don't see the name there. That's why I'm, I'm struggling. Can you send her the, just the general link? I mean, are you sure she's in there? Let me look under panelists.
She was here unless.
She may have given up. So if you have her login as the general member of the public, again, if someone could text her to try again, we'll keep an eye out and try to bring her into the meeting. I'm sorry, Mayor. The multitasking hit a certain level where I, I don't think I can do it.
Okay, Matt's good to do that.
All right, thank you.
I need you now, Terri.
Yes.
We've asked questions and talked about things. I'd like to open it up to the public. And just a reminder, as we do in all our council meetings, each public question is limited to, speaker is limited to three minutes, so that more people have a chance to talk. And I believe, Terri, you already have people who have sent in their request to speak, correct?
Correct. So I'm going off the list that I have, that Emma provided me. And I'm just going to go in the order that she put it on the list. And the first one I have is Anna Halen. And I, I thought I spotted her in the list, so I'm going to find her. And I'm obviously doing, miss, there she is. I'm gonna... Anna, you should be able to speak. Please state your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Anna Halen, and I live on two thirty-five Montgomery Street. Since no one was allowed to dispute the misinformation spread by the Division of Fish and Wildlife during the meeting in June, I would like to take the opportunity to do so now. First of all, there is no such thing as an objective number of deer that a community should or shouldn't have. Actually, even Fish and Wildlife themselves admitted that any number quoted is a political one, not a biology-based one. So this means that it's meaningless to talk about numbers. And what we need to talk about instead is what conflicts people experience. So, residents have reported that they are intimidated by deer. Does it mean that we need to kill deer? No, it means that we need to provide education. Deer are not aggressive, not even box. Residents are concerned that deer are eating their plants. Does that mean that we need to kill deer? No, it means that we need to provide information about deer-resistant plants and deer repellents. Residents are worried about Lyme disease. But as we heard, for the Center for Disease Control doesn't recommend deer hunting as a way of combating Lyme disease, because it has been shown that it doesn't work. So, why then do we even talk about killing deer when there isn't any reason to do so? Could it have anything to do with the fact that Fish and Wildlife are heavily biased towards hunting, perhaps? I know that the council knows this, because they have explicitly told us so. And anyone who is in doubt can just visit Fish and Wildlife's website on deer, because all they talk about is deer hunting. And while you're at it, Google deer corn to see what hunters are doing to increase the number of deer. I do hope that you understand that if you allow hunters in Highland Park, you are starting an annual hunt with no upper limit, not in number of years, not in number of deer killed. And I hope that you also understand that there is nothing humane about a bow hunt. Deer are skittish. Not even the most experienced hunters can guarantee anything. And you can just Google deer wounded by bow hunting, and you will see what it looks like. I know most of you are sitting by a computer now, so go ahead, just Google it. Because what you see is what the children of Highland Park will see during the fall. Wounded deer can survive for weeks or even months with an arrow sticking out of them. There is no reason for us to kill any deer in Highland Park other than to make the minuscule minority of New Jerseyans who are hunters happy. Deer are not dangerous. They do not attack people. Killing deer does not produce Lyme disease, and there are plenty of ways to protect our plants. So, I want to ask every resident of Highland Park, why is it that you would want to start a mass killing of deer that will be nearly impossible to stop once it starts? Let the mayor and the council know. This is our town, and we, the people, have the right to decide whether we want a mass slaughter here or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Who is next? Okay, hold on one second, Mayor.
The next on my list is Randy Solomon, who I saw. Randy, can you say your name so we know you're there?
Hi, Randy Solomon.
All right.
All right, Randy Solomon, three thirty-one Felton Avenue. And I'm also the executive director of Sustainable Jersey. But I want to make clear that I'm speaking for myself as a resident and not on behalf of Sustainable Jersey. But I do want to talk about the ethics of a deer hunt and the morals and the sustainability implications. So, our planet is in crisis from overuse of resources by people. And it's resulting in climate change, it's resulting in species extinctions, it's resulting in accumulation of plastics and toxins around the world. And it's, it's resulting in clearing of tremendous amounts of land to produce our food. And the industrial agricultural system that we rely on is extremely damaging to, to the planet. It causes a lot of animal suffering, it causes human suffering, and it degrades, you know, our chances for a sustainable, positive life in the future. So, whether it's, whether it's animals or plants, and certainly animals have a much bigger impact than plants on the environment, anything that you buy in a store, anything that's not really bought local, is going to be, is going to have a tremendous environmental impact. It's going to be grown somewhere, land will be cleared, animals will be displaced and killed, animals will be trapped and killed to prevent them from eating those vegetables. Then they'll be shipped here, burning fossil fuels all along the way, being refrigerated. It's, it's not a very sustainable system. And the, at every step along the way, there are animals and people that suffer in various ways. Again, you can calculate for any particular type of food, the number of animals that are killed, whether it's mice and birds and other animals that are, that are killed when you clear a field for agriculture. And in fact, you know, there are rainforests being lost around the world, soils being harvested, soil is diminishing due to our unsustainable agricultural practices. So meanwhile, what is the most healthful, organic, sustainable, low-impact source of food you could have? Well, I would say eating local deer. You know, the, the, the problem in Highland Park with the deer population, and I think the people who talked about the ecological impacts are, you know, they were very eloquent. I'm not going to expand on that. But I just want to point out that it's ironic that we're going to essentially ban people from hunting, which has always happened. Wolves hunt, people hunt, bear hunt. The deer evolved naturally with predators.
Thirty seconds, Randy.
Okay, so I just think it's, you know, it's, it's ironic and sort of sad that we're, we're banning hunting here, which is causing all these ecological problems, when actually just consuming the deer and filling that natural niche as predators locally kind of solves the problem and prevents people from consuming, or enables them to not have to consume food that has this tremendous ecological cost.
Time.
Thank you, Randy.
Next on the list is Lindsay Holman, who I believe I see. Randy, I'm first going to turn you off, sorry. All right, I'm just going to move ahead. Lindsay, please state your name so we know you can, we can hear you.
Hi there, I'm Lindsay Holman.
Hi there.
So, good evening. At the last meeting, the New Jersey Department of Fish and Wildlife claims to offer a non-biased overview of lethal and non-lethal deer management strategies. The reality is, they are heavily funded by the hunting community and stand to benefit financially from towns' proven annual culls. State wildlife agencies are largely funded by taxes and fees tied to hunting and fishing, most of which don't amount to much for ordinary hunters and anglers. But trophy hunters who are willing to spend big, hunt exactly when, where, and what they want, demonstrate what happens when that system is taken to its extreme. Now, while the revenue that high-dollar trophy hunting generates pays for recovery efforts that help game species flourish, it also binds wildlife managers to a style of hunting that most Americans, and even many hunters, find is tasteful. Anis Aude, the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife Game Division manager, even said, quote, "It's basically a way to gain revenue from that species to manage it. There's really not anything biological that goes into it," end quote. Because state wildlife management efforts prioritize game species, the source of most of their funding, they tend to overlook creatures that are not hunted or fished. Wildlife managers stress, however, that the species do receive the most attention, do well in part because of the revenue generated by auctions and unrestricted raffles. New Jersey Fish and Wildlife's claim that non-lethal deer management strategies are ineffective is completely inaccurate. They chose to gloss over the fact that deer birth control and other non-lethal strategies have found much success in Long Island and many other places. It's one of many effective non-lethal possibilities. So, how can the township of Highland Park trust the word of the Department of Fish and Wildlife when they've already been bought and paid for by the hunting, fishing, and gaming community? We do not have a deer problem. We have a developer problem. And our small suburban town is much better served by adopting a non-lethal strategy, such as birth control. Even though it's expensive, it's worth the cost, instead of relying on Fish and Wildlife more inaccurate information and proving a giant cult in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Terri, it is past eight-thirty. I'm going to, I know you have people who've registered, so let's continue with the registered speakers, and then we'll...
I have another...
How many?
Fifteen who registered. I can't guarantee they're all on there, but most of them appear to be and had indicated they'd be participating, just so you have, so maybe people can be mindful of the time in their comments to some extent.
So let's, let's go till nine o'clock, and that should take care of everybody who registered.
I hope so, yeah.
Okay.
All right, next up is Tatiana Gelfand. Tatiana, I think I spotted you. Please state your name, make sure we have you on the line.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Tatiana Gelfand, one one eight North Stiff Avenue. Okay, I don't want to repeat much, but I do need to make a statement that I have contacted the council, and I spoke twice at the previous meetings, asking to invite the animal nonprofit, Animal Protection League of New Jersey, one of the largest organizations in the state, which is helping different towns in New Jersey apply non-lethal solutions. I, my question was never answered. It, I was said that it will be considered, but it was even never mentioned before, after that. So this is just a statement for the public to know. I don't know why that happens, but this is, this is one thing. Okay, I completely agree about the very biased presentation of Department of Fish and Wildlife. And basically, I want to, to say that we really need the second opinion, a second opinion as like any patient, you know, anybody with a problem always have the right to have, has the right to have. And this should be a non, someone for non-killing solutions. So, this is one thing. Also, I want to point it out that rather than discussing, I'm sorry, like monkeys in India or like other countries or farming animals, let us focus on the problem that we want to find the solution. And what is the problem? The problem, as was presented on June thirtieth, was that some people in Highland Park made complaints. It would be very interesting for the public to know how many people made these complaints about deer, and if they can be kind of grouped by the number of, by the items, which were, I feel intimidated, Lyme disease, car accidents, and plants. Intimidated was addressed, Lyme disease was addressed. Let me say a few things about the car accidents. So as Terry said herself, on June 30th, the car accidents are not applicable to Highland Park. Yes, probably there are none, or I don't know the statistics.
Thirty seconds, Tatiana.
Okay, now imagine if you would have deer hunt going on for five months, whatever, maybe not daily, annually, for ten years in a row. What will happen with the deer who are running, who are injured, and the other ones who escaped the arrows and are running in panic all around Highland Park, knocking down children, getting into the cars? And because, you know, when they run for life, they don't see well.
Time.
That's it?
That's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tatiana.
The next person is Susan Edmonds, who I did see in the list, let me find her. Susan, can you say something so we know you?
Audio working? Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Susan Edmonds and I live at 440 Grant Avenue. I'm a volunteer at the Highland Park Native Plant Sanctuary. And I wanted to speak again about, answer the question, why? Why do we need to, do we have a deer problem? And I want to speak in terms of the supply of drinking water, which is threatened by deer. And that may seem far-fetched, but scientists predict that by 2030, that's ten years from now, here in central New Jersey, the amount of available fresh water will not be enough to meet demand. It's not that we don't have enough rain, and it's not that we use water carelessly. The real problem is that there is not enough, that not enough of the rain that falls is sinking into the ground and filling underground aquifers from which much of our drinking water is drawn. The cause is largely the fact that much of the groundwater, the ground is covered by surfaces that water cannot penetrate, like roads, buildings, and parking lots. But there are solutions that do not involve plowing up our cities. Stormwater utilities are engineering that help the absorption of rainwater into the ground. Sometimes it involves earth movers and concrete. But green infrastructure, which uses plants to help with water absorption, is more cost-effective and has other benefits. Rain gardens are an example. And recent studies done actually at Rutgers show that forests are the most effective and least expensive form of green infrastructure. But a forest is not just a bunch of any old trees. A functional forest needs a mix of mature trees, shrubs, and ground-level plants, as Craig said so eloquently. And most of these plants need to be native plants. Then other life forms like microorganisms, insects, birds, and small animals can function together as an ecosystem. In this case, the soil is then alive and absorptive. Water is filtered and cleaned as it sinks through layers of soil. There's actually still room for more forests in central New Jersey, believe it or not. Even backyard-sized forests can be effective, especially if they're connected with others. But there are virtually no functional forests in central New Jersey now because deer have eaten the ground-level native plants and the shrub level. There will be no new generation of native canopy trees because deer have destroyed seedlings and saplings. Our so-called forests are largely collections of invasive plants that deer don't like to eat and that have no benefits to local ecosystems. In order to have functional forests that will help rebuild our drinking water supply, we must reduce the population of deer and foster the growth of functional forests. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Susan. Terry?
All right, the next person on the list is Ashley Hartwick. Hold on, let me see. Ashley, let me see, I have your phone number, Missy, 2359, I think I found you. Ashley, I believe I just unmuted you, could you confirm it's you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ashley?
Yes.
Great.
Great, okay. I'm Ashley, I've been a resident of Highland Park since 1983. I am in favor of reduction of the number of deer, but I'm very disturbed by the proposal to bring bow hunting into our public areas and the manner it's been pushed forward without even considering the other effective options that exist. It's true, the deer are getting more concentrated in town, even though they're not gaining numbers. People mention issues that arise because of that, but nobody has yet mentioned the cause of them becoming more concentrated, which is that the open spaces in our town have been demolished over the past few years. The bulldozing of the entire valley behind South Fifth, Cleveland Avenue developments, the huge warehouse development on Kilmer, killing the deer whose habitats were destroyed. I heard earlier someone said is our perfect ecological solution. It's not, that reverses the cause and effect, the deer are the effect, not the cause. And I have to ask, why are some people trying to push us straight to bow hunting without doing anything about that root cause? I've seen the Department of Fish and Wildlife has been very influential in the view of the council so far. Someone earlier said that they are the ones that pulled it all together, pushing the council towards hunting straight away without considering other options, disparaging other options that do work elsewhere. Did you know the DFW gets a full 33% of their yearly revenue from hunting and fishing licenses? That's in their public budget that they publish online. We have seen many governmental agencies are facing furloughs and shortfalls. They want to find other sources for income besides federal and state funding. They're all doing it, it's in their interest to bring in more revenue. So they will push hunting and claim it's the only option that works, regardless of whether or not that's true, which it is not. Hunting does not actually reduce the population of deer because of the rebound effect. When there's a lower population of deer, then the does begin to have twins and triplets the next year because they can feed themselves better during their pregnancy. As we heard earlier, Princeton has been doing hunting for ten years, and someone else said hunting will have to be an annual thing. That's because you hunt them, they rebound over the year, then they come back. So it's not an actual solution and other solutions are more effective if you actually do want to reduce your deer population permanently. Let's look at them, we haven't even looked at the other options. Bow hunting itself, if you must hunt, bow hunting, although it sounds quaint, is a harrowing way for animals to die. Bow hunting leaves a full 50% of animals wounded instead of killed. So I heard earlier someone said the poor deer with arrows hanging out of their bodies, yes, 50%. And one of the techniques of bow hunting itself is to follow the trail of blood. That's an established technique that they do. So the area being proposed, the meadows, is about the size of the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot. So those trails of blood are going to be coming out right into our communities, which brings me to liability. We know that there are hundreds of hunting accidents every year, and these arrows, which are called bolts, can be shot up to 500 yards away, which is the size of five football fields.
Actually, you're at the thirty-second warning.
Okay, again, who is liable and who will pay if a child or pet is struck by a bolt coming from the meadows? After these bolts are shot around the meadows, there will be arrowheads scattered around because many of them miss. Who will be liable for the injuries if a person, a child, or a pet stumble on them? Who will come and remove injured and wounded deer from people's properties? Can we be informed today who would be responsible for that? Or are we supposed to just let the deer bleed out over days or weeks on our properties in front of our children? Will wounded deer be rehabilitated? How much will that cost and who will pay for it?
Time.
We have had, thank you.
Terry, when I said we'll end the meeting at nine, we have to leave some time also for the council to...
Well, I was wondering if you, yeah, so I wasn't sure what you meant extended as the public comment tonight. We've gotten several more people on the list, I'm open to how you would want to handle.
I don't think it's fair for people who have registered not to be heard. So I'd like to do that. Council, if this takes us to nine fifteen, if we ended at nine with public, are you guys willing to stay on till nine fifteen?
Seventeen minutes to get through, one, two, three, four, five.
I'd rather hear the public. And I've had the opportunity to question, so I would waive time. I would like to have all of the people, at least that registered, be heard.
If everybody takes three minutes, we are at thirty-three minutes to get through who I have left on the list, assuming.
All right, so then let's, council members, are you okay not discussing further and holding further discussion for the work session on the eighteenth?
I think we need to hear from the public for the rest of the ones who signed up, they need to be heard.
Right, I agree. Okay, everybody all right?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's continue with people who registered, Terry.
Next on the list is Jen Boies. Hold on, allow it to... Oh, Jen is using an older version of Zoom, hold on. Let me see if I can choose promote. I'm going to have to promote Jen to a panelist temporarily in order to let her be heard, excuse me. It's a new one. Jen, are you there? You're challenging my Zoom skills. Jen?
She looks like she's muted.
I see you there, Jen, I think you have to unmute yourself, so.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, okay, thank you. So, thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate that you're allowing the community members to share our thoughts and concerns. I do want to quickly add that I'm concerned the options were narrowed down by the council to just do nothing or bow hunting. There are clearly other things that can be tried that fall in between these two extremes. I'm not referring to the non-lethal suggestions mentioned on one of Terry's slides, costly infertility drugs, sterilizations, or trap and transfer. But I'll mention a few things I think we can and should try at the end of my statement. Okay, so there are a lot of arguments for and against hunting and a lot of arguments for and against the different types of deer control. But it all seems irrelevant as far as Highland Park is concerned. The DFW shared in their presentation on June 30th that deer typically do not die of disease or starvation in New Jersey, let alone in Highland Park. They said deer vehicle accidents is the only major issue in New Jersey, but again, this is not the case in Highland Park. Some of our neighbors are upset that their deer-friendly gardens are being eaten by deer. This may be a nuisance to them, but it does not warrant passing an ordinance to allow bow hunting in the meadows. As others have explained, bow hunting kills by hemorrhage or bleeding out, and unless a perfect, or what hunters call ethical, shot is achieved, there's a very real chance the deer will wander off to die in someone's backyard. My family lives very close to the meadows, so this is a personal concern of mine. While eating at the proposed baiting stations at the meadows, the deer will not be in a position for an ethical shot, which means they're even more likely to run off and suffer. It's also more difficult to make this type of shot from a tree stand. Hunting for the purpose of deer control simply isn't needed in Highland Park. If this didn't already pass a week or two ago, please consider adopting an ordinance banning the feeding of deer. This was DFW's number-one recommendation and should really be the first thing we try. Please also consider providing education to our neighbors about how to plant deer-resistant gardens. People have already volunteered to provide this service. Maybe the town could help connect our neighbors with these volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Terry. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to... Sorry, I don't know how to D promoter, so I'll come back to that. I'm going to go to the next person, I have Mark Lesko. I saw a Mark in the list, I'm going to hope that that's Mark Lesko. I've unmuted you, is this Mark Lesko? Hello, the person named Mark in the list?
He's still muted, Terry.
That's himself, that's not me. But, let me try. Yeah, Mark, you have to unmute yourself. All right. I think we should go to the next person, Mayor, I don't want to, I know we're short on time, I'll circle back there. The next person on the list is someone named Suzanne Atikolas. I don't see a Suzanne on the list. Suzanne, if you're there, please raise your hand, using the raise hand on the Zoom application, please. I'm just scanning one more time, all righty. Next on my list, Mayor, I see is Marcia Wasserman. Marcia, please raise your hand. I don't see a Marcia in the list. Oh no, we're gonna, let me get through. Let me double check. Sorry, the intent was to have Emma help me with this, but her power went out tonight for the rest of council and the public to know. I'm going to move to, I see someone who's raised their hand, named Baba. I'm going to allow you to talk on the off chance that you're one of the people I already called. Could you please state your name? If you're not that person, we're going to have to go to the next person. Baba, are you there?
Yes.
And are you one of the people I already called?
Marcia Wasserman.
Oh, great, thank you.
Okay, so I am in favor of the hunting, but I just had a question. How many deer need to be killed a year or a season to make a difference? I mean, we're clearly not talking about two. I don't know, are we talking 200 a season? Or, I just have no idea, to get a sense of how feasible that would be.
Terry?
I don't have a specific answer, that's something that we would have to kind of hone in on. But numbers I've previously heard from conversations with Fish and Wildlife were in the order of forty per season. But I don't commit to that number, that's going to be something if we move forward, we have to nail down as part of our management plan.
Okay, and I would also be in favor of not having local people who are taking up a bow for a first time to be the hunters, but rather this organization that you talked about where they are experienced, and I think they would do a better job.
Okay, thank you. All righty. The next person, following Marcia, I have Stephen Kaczynski. I'm going to go for Stephen, I see you. Stephen, please state your name for us.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
I'm Stephen Kaczynski. I live on 116 North Fifth Avenue. Right next to Tatiana, who also spoke recently. Well, most of what I was going to say has been said. So, and I was very interested hearing about what's going to happen to the woods. I'm not sure that the preservation of the meadows is a fair trade-off for inhumane killing of deer. And while the person just before me said she's glad that we would have professional people doing it humanely, that followed along people specifically saying that there really is no way to do, humane way to do it with a bow and arrow. But I do want, while I was listening to these things, I did happen to look up on another website called DearBusters.com, and I want to read what this was said. And this goes along with the idea that we are getting solutions, or rather, the negation of solutions, using the fish and wildlife as an authority, which we keep using as authority even in this discussion, even though we know that they are making their money from hunters and the selling of hunting licenses. So it's imperative that we get an authority that does not have that bias. It is not possible to have unbiased solutions from that department. Anyway, what I just looked up, and this goes on to the idea about putting up a fence. Now, as you know, deer have a bad habit of eating tree bark and rubbing their itlers on the tree limbs. And we explained about, it was explained very well about the problem with that. This is why deer fencing and tree guards are needed. Both deer management strategies are easy to implement and use. As the name implies, tree wraps simply wrap around young trees and will protect the branches and bark from deer damage. Polydeer fencing, if used in the recommended height of 7.5 or 8 feet, will lower the chance of deer jumping to reach trees. We choose plastic deer fence for tree protection because it is more flexible than steer deer fence and will be easier to use on trees. If building deer fence isn't in your forest management plan or being used on tree farms, then it's time to give it a try. So I suggest that being as we have had opinions about these non-lethal solutions from biased authority, we relook at these solutions and at least get a second opinion.
Thirty-second warning.
Okay. I want to suggest that Highland Park engage in a real dialogue among people to explore question number one, is there a problem? This dialogue should exist among the citizens of the town, should not be dominated by an outside department that makes money from the killing of animals. And maybe just getting together as a community, and please listen to this, really talking to each other and exploring these questions without being controlled by a preconceived agenda might really infuse a feeling of community connection, empowerment, and a powerful teaching to our children and ourselves that could have a positive reverberation that could extend far beyond the immediate question.
All right, that's your time.
Thank you.
Next up, I have a Paul McCullen. And I see you there, Paul, are you there? Should be able to speak.
How about now?
Now you can.
Alright. My name is Paul McCullen. I reside at 320 Montgomery Avenue, Street, sorry, here in Highland Park. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for having this open forum. So often, even at the local level, this kind of stuff is done behind closed doors with... I think we're having that chance right now to provide public input, although it's limited, you know, in our day and age right now, but it is there. I'm for this hunt, or any management plan that does include reduction of the deer population in this town. And I do believe with the science and the information that was given to the council, that there's enough there to take that forward and work with it. There have been counter-arguments here. You know, a lot of people saying that Fish Game and Wildlife is a biased organization. They work for you and me, the taxpayer. DMV works for us. They also have to have fees in order to operate. The DEP has to have fees in order to operate. Our own police department issues tickets that help fund and move them forward. You know, this is the dirty business of it. The town has fees that they issue in order to manage our community and our state. Going and simply doing something like fencing is just going to move the problem. The problem moves from where you fenced it, and moves it even more into the community itself. I myself are a renter. I'm also a member of our community garden down in Donaldson Park. There are many renters who have plots there, simply because we cannot fence in our properties like so many of those that own property in town. Many of us are on some of the larger developments that are open space and are now going to be fenced in. It limits what we're able to do as gardeners with the limited space we have that cannot be fenced. I think you've heard enough from certain committees to do something, and many of the arguments I've heard against come in turn from another, what I would say, biased group that have, you know, taken upon themselves to arrange themselves, develop a website, and put out what I really do consider a lot of misleading information that is just cherry-picked for what they want. You know, you've done the diligent work. You've been at it a year. I commend you for that, and I really do-
Thirty-second warning.
Yes, thank you. I do hope you move forward with this. Work with the county. This is a democratic town. We have democratic freeholders. We're surrounded by democratic towns. I am sure that you can come to agreements with the county in order to make this a plan that is sustainable, that works, reduces the population, and increases the environmental viability, not only of the open space we have, but also for those of us like myself that try to work with the owner of the property to manage it in such a way that we can plant and something sustainable that isn't going to be destroyed by a population out of balance. Thank you very much.
Terry?
Next, I have Matt Wisowski. Excuse my pronunciation. I did see someone named Max. I'm gonna ask you if you are in fact... Is this Max Wisowski? You might have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Are you the Max Wisowski who signed up?
Yes.
Great, great.
Hi, my name is Max Wisowski. I live at 54 North Seventh Avenue. I lived here over 50 years. I think it is a wonderful place to live. Unfortunately, so do the deer. The last few years, they've taken over my backyard, my lawn, and my patio. They like to laze in the sun for hours at a time, eating my shrubs and bushes. Recently, I even had a little baby deer born right on my lawn. The problem with this idyllic scene is that I've already been bitten twice by deer tick, and I've had to go to the doctor twice to get treatments to prevent Lyme disease. That is twice that I've been, that I know of, and I'm sure there've been many other times that I've been bitten. But I just can't keep running to the doctor every time I step out into my backyard. As it is, every time I go onto my yard and come back into the house, I have to strip completely, shower, and examine myself for possible tick bites. This is not the way I envisioned having to live in Highland Park. The problem is, I'm 87 years old, and with all that is going on with the coronavirus pandemic and the deadly effect it has, it has on seniors, the last thing I also want to have to worry about is Lyme's disease of all things. I have nothing against deer themselves, but just want them away from my home. I use deer repellent. That's the kind that you buy in Walmart or Home Depot, but it is only partially effective, and I have to continually reapply it if it has, in order to have any effect at all. I'm in favor of the borough trying to reduce the deer population by any means possible, preferably by non-lethal means, but if not, then whatever it takes to keep them from taking over my home. At this point, it's either the deer or me, and I would prefer to stay in Highland Park for a while longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Alright, Terry. Next on the list is Ravit Duncan, who I did see on there. Oh. Hold on, did I get the right person? I got, I got prim, a high prim. I didn't need to do that to you. One moment. Someone I know. Let me try again. Where did they go? I'm losing it. I saw Ravit Duncan and, oh, there you go. Ravit, there you go. You rose your hand and dropped it in the top. Are you there?
Yes, hi. Ravit Duncan. We live at 311 Lawrence Ave. I'm going to cede the floor to the next generation. Aitan Duncan is a rising sixth grader, and Gaia Duncan is a rising third grader. Take it away.
This is our fault. We caused this problem by destroying their habitat. It is not fair to kill now because they want food. The deer are a bit annoying. They eat our plants, but does that mean we should kill them?
Punishment does not fit the crime.
My dog knows me sometimes, but I do not go around shooting it with a bow and arrow. In school, we learned to share, care, and be kind. Hunting is the exact opposite.
Killing deer is immoral and inhumane.
We should embrace the deer, and I don't mean go hug it here. I mean we should let them into our home. Many deer do not die right away. The first percent do not die fast. They go for a slow and painful deaths, sometimes in your yard.
Even a lung shot can leave a deer alive for hours.
Even if we do hunt them, and it will take many years of hunting, more deer will just come in from different places around.
Nature abhors a deer vacuum. More will come.
The deer problem is a social problem. We can live together. We are better and do not need to hurt these harmless creatures.
Too many deer is in the eye of the beholder. The Fish and Wildlife presentation was a bit biased, not surprising since they make money from hunters. We need to hear from the other side, fair and balanced. Invite the Animal Protection League of New Jersey. There is a third option. Only nine out of the 565 towns in New Jersey chose controlled hunting. We do not need to join them. None of our neighbors did. As future citizens and voters, we say no. We have done our research. There are better solutions. Do the right thing.
We can coexist. Peace out.
Thank you, Mayor and the council.
Thank you.
Alright. Next on, I have Ruth Solomon. Let me scroll down. I see Ruth Solomon. Please state your name so we know we got the right person.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Ruth Solomon. I live at 704 South First Avenue in Highland Park. I live a block from the park, so probably I get more deer than other people do. Every year, I plant a beautiful garden. Yes, I do put in the deer-resistant flowers, and they do eat many of them. I've gotten the Rutgers list. I've gotten the Cornell list. I, however, I don't consider that the worst problem. I do consider that I have slammed on the brakes, and many times they've flown out right in front of my car, and I think it's just plain dangerous. I think it's time to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. You're mayor.
Alrighty. I have Gabriella Dietz. Let me see if I can find you there. There you are. Gabriella?
Hi.
Hi. Say your name again.
Hi, my name is Gabriella Dietz. I'm 11 years old. I live on 110 South 11th Avenue. Thank you for inviting me to speak to you this evening. I'd like to share my feelings on this issue. I'm surprised that killing the deer with bow, with a bow and arrow, is the best option that we can come up with. This seems to be a cruel way to control the deer population. I understand the problems of having many deer in a residential community. One of these is car accidents. However, according to the representative from the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife who spoke at the previous town meeting, there are very few deer-related car accidents in Highland Park. Another issue is the risk of getting Lyme disease. I read that from 2017 to 2018, there were fewer cases of Lyme disease in Middlesex County rather than more. It seems like the two main problems are damage to gardens and the fact that some people are uncomfortable around wild deer. I have some ideas. We all agree that we have too many deer in Highland Park. One solution is controlling how many baby deer are born each year. There is a medicine that can be given to our female deer through a darts that will prevent them from having babies. It is called PZP vaccine, although some people have said that it doesn't work. There are communities in which it has worked. There are all, there are also reliable studies about this medication. I respectfully ask you to please look into it. Another idea that I have is to create enclosed deer parks within Highland Park. For example, we could use the fields in the high school park or an area in Donaldson Park. We do not need to enclose all the deer, just some of them. I think a reasonable goal is to reduce the amount of deer, is to reduce, I'm sorry. I think a reasonable goal is to reduce the amount of deer roaming around, not eliminate them. To address the issue of damage to gardens, there are some easy solutions. Although deer can jump up to eight feet high, they cannot jump very far and have poor depth perception. According to gardening experts, if you have two four-foot-high fences spaced four feet apart, the deer will stay out of your garden. Another thing, another thing you could do is plant things deers don't like. There are many flowers and shrubs that deers tend to stay away from, for example, lavender, daffodils, zinnias, and lilacs. If you want to find more extensive, more extensive lists, you can look online. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Gabriella.
Next on the list is Sam Leibowitz, who I did see. Sam, you should be able to speak. Please say your name.
Sam Leibowitz? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I live at 106 North Second. Graduated from Highland Park High School, moved away, and just recently came back to the area. I am a avid deer hunter, so I would obviously be in favor of this measure. There have been some concerns addressed. I'd like to address a couple of them, right? There, one concern was a public health issue, chronic wasting disease. That's a concern of mine also, trichinosis as well. And you, you know, so, so one of the things, I do eat the, the meat from the animals that I kill. You can test samples of the meat, and that mitigates that concern. There are public safety concerns, and I completely understand those. I feel that there isn't a need to secure the area, but I do understand why there, some people would feel that way. So Terry, at the June 30th meeting, you mentioned that the responsibility always lays with the hunter, right? And the folks from Fish and Wildlife mentioned the same thing. And that's something that hunters take very seriously, right? Know what's in the path of your shot and well beyond. Not to mention, I'm a rational, you know, reasonable person, just like you. I'm sitting up in a tree. I can tell the difference between a deer and somebody walking down a walking path, right? The only thing that might happen is if I was lining up a shot, they ruined my hunt, and oh, well, you know, they, they would obviously take precedence. But I can under, like I said, I can understand why some folks might be concerned. So, you know, that, but ultimately, it is the person's responsibility. I am a Marine Corps veteran qualified as a expert marksman, right? And just like in the Marine Corps, the hunting community always pushes personal responsibility and safety. There are plenty of parks. I've been on the other side of that situation, you know, parks in Middlesex County where I was walking with my wife and my infant son. And just off the track, trail, I saw a bow hunter in a tree stand. He looked kind of annoyed, just like I would, right? Because I, I did ruin his hunt. You know, there were some deer in the area, and I, I spooked them off, but that's just the nature of coexisting with recreational hikers and hunters in the same plot. The meadows is kind of a challenging environment to hunt, right? It is a small area, so I do agree it should be experienced hunters. You know, Terry, you talked about wife buffalo, and Mayor, you used the word higher kind of early on in this conversation. And I think if you excluded residents like myself, it would be a missed opportunity for hunters, for one in the, in the area. One of the statistics that was presented was that there are declining hunters in New Jersey, and it's not that-
Excuse me, you got a thirty-second warnings. I missed, sorry.
Sure. So I personally have never hunted in New Jersey. I'd go to Pennsylvania or even Ohio just because of things like deer management programs, and, you know, it's very difficult as a resident to be able to hunt an area. I would just-
Time.
Okay.
Thank you, Sam.
And then, I think I made it to the last person, although I'll look back to make sure one of the raised hands isn't one of my prior callers. I have someone named Terry Lee on my list. Let me see if you're here. Terry Lee, could you raise your hand for me? Oh, or you could dial star nine if you're on the call. I have, because I have a note here from Emma that they might be Skyping in. I'm gonna try this person who just raised their hand. Is, I've, I've unmuted Talia Avery, thinking it might be Terry Lee. Is that the case?
No, hi, it's Peter Avery. That's my daughter's name.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to take the floor away from you for a moment because I don't think you pre-registered.
Yeah, I just had my hand up.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to cut him off, but I did. I apologize. Terry Lee, one last chance to star nine. I'm gonna just try this. One that says Rubens that has had their hand up for a bit. Rubens, are you either Mark Lesko, Suzanne Petikolas, or Terry Lee by any chance?
This is Steve Rubin.
Ah, I don't think you pre-registered according to my-
I thought we're not allowed to talk if we didn't pre-register.
That was, well, we were focusing on, I'm gonna have to put you on, on hold there. Mayor, I think we've hit the end of our pre-registering list at this point.
Okay, so it's 9:15. We've gone 45 minutes beyond. I, I'm, I am open to staying till 9:15, 9:30, and then ending it completely. Council members, are you okay with that? Yes? Okay. So Terry, you can open it up, but we must end at 9:30.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I guess I have two hands raised at this point. And again, we only have a few more opportunities, but people can raise their hands if they want.
Did you have somebody named Avery who you-
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to those two. I, I forget your first name, but Talia Avery, whose name is something other than Talia, please say your name.
Yeah, that's okay. Talia's my daughter. This is Peter. Peter Avery. I'm at 402 Graham Street. Thank you. And like other people have said, thank you for this opportunity. I'll be brief. Reasonable people can come up with reasonable decisions. I trust everybody who's on this screen to represent the town and not personal agendas. I will say I've been a little disturbed by the conspiratorial attacks on fish and wildlife, and even having children spout them. What I'd like to share is we've been in this town now for 16, 15 years, and for the first five years, we did not see deer walking around like this. For the last, I'd say, five to seven years, we have a family of deer living in our yard pretty much every day. I have two children who do not go outside anymore to play in our yard. I have two children who do not go outside anymore to play in our yard. I appreciate that people think this is just about gardening. And I don't think that gardeners should be attacked for wanting to have gardens. I don't think everybody should have to enclose their yards with fences and make this some kind of industrial complex. There's a real issue here with deer. The woman said she slammed her brakes several times. I've had to do that also. You heard from Craig and other people talking about the ecological impact. The truth is that nobody is against deer. Everybody who's working on behalf of this is actually trying to be humane about this. And I think from what I know, from friends of mine that are hunters, actually crossbow hunting is, is quite a humane act. This is something that needs to be addressed. The comment about deer not sharing ticks is a falsehood. They carry them. So earlier on, we heard from somebody from the Board of Health talking about that deer are not responsible for Lyme disease. No, but ticks are, and they carry the ticks, and the ticks come into our yards. We've, we've had to check our children for ticks, and we do that too often. So I appreciate those people that are willing to be brave enough to say that they are in favor of a deer hunt, which sounds cruel. I'm not gonna lie. It sounds harsh. But the reality is, I get to hear an alternative that was better, that's not expensive. The people that talk about birth control means, I'd like them to fund it and then research it and make sure that it works. Because I did not find statistics that showed that it was as effective as a deer hunt. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you, Peter. Who's next?
I'm gonna go back to the one that had a hand raised named Rubens, who has a more complete name than that. Could you please state your full name? Sorry, I, I cut you off, but we came back to you.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Steve Rubin, and my family has lived in Highland Park since 1962. And I was born and raised in Highland Park. I live on, at 66 South Adelaide with my family. And I am really surprised that out of all the issues that are going on in the world, I don't have to repeat them all, but the pandemic, the financial crisis, everything, that deer management in Little Highland Park is at the top of the priority list, or if not at the top of the priority list, taking up so much of our time. We have such, such bigger problems in the world and in Highland Park. And I've actually lived here so many years. We get deer in our backyard. We actually think they're adorable. And we're not typically like huge animal lovers, but we think deer are very nice. And Highland Park is a community that cares so much about every social group. And somehow, we've now like brought ourselves down to doing crossbow hunting, which is not ethical or nice at all. And it's just not the right thing for Highland Park. Maybe in other towns, hunting is something to do, but I just don't see it in Highland Park. And I don't see how the council is spending so much of their time. We also watch the Board of Education meetings, and they have the biggest issue going on right now of bringing kids back to school. And people ask at the Board of Ed meetings, well, what does the township council say about the idea of bringing kids back to school? The health and safety of it? And we know that the Board of Ed is their own entity, but they actually make comments and they say, oh, we get very, very little interest or cooperation from the council. So I would think the council should maybe focus on things like bringing little kids back to school before they're worried about shooting deer. So I hope you'll take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, I think we hit the end of the line there of hands raised, so.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And council members, I think there's a lot for us to digest and, and think about. And I hope that we'll be able to continue the discussion on work session at an upcoming council meeting. So I'm going to say goodbye to everyone and thank you again. Thank you, all the panelists from the commissions and boards for expressing your boards and commissions' point of view. And we'll be calling on you again for some information. Thank you.
You.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Good night.